Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett for the Committee of the Hall meeting for November 17th, 2020. I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonero.
President.
Danny.
Here.
Gansey.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Sawansky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is under Community and Economic Development. Chairman Gansey.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of serving on the EDC before I was on the board, so I'm aware of this program, but the Village Board created and funded the Bartlett Economic Development Assistance BETA Program to have an economic incentive program to help business owners in rehabilitating and renovating vacant and underperforming spaces into sales tax generating businesses and spaces that meet all current Village code requirements. The Board has funded the program with $250,000 and staff has offered BETA grants to several businesses over the past three years with $250,000 in grants having been made leveraging $2.7 million in private investment. So as they continue working with this program and to attract additional investment to various areas, the staff proposed some modifications and improvements to the program, including reducing the amount of time to be eligible from three years to two, eliminating all references to a 50% reimbursement percentage, requiring the submittal of a business plan, and considering an applicant's veteran status. They have not brought a new BETA application to the EDC and Board this year, but they're working on several in the coming months. The EDC reviewed the proposed changes at its October 12th meeting, at which time it recommended in favor of making them. Is Tony on with us? Does he want to add some other input into that information?
Yes, I am on the call. Thank you, trustee Gansey. And as you mentioned, you had reviewed, I think, pretty much all of these, your years serving on the EDC. So, these proposed changes came about as Scott and I continue meeting with various businesses, working to attract additional businesses into vacant spaces and underutilized buildings throughout the community. And these are just a few of the things that have come up over the past two and a half years that we haven't really come in with any recommendations for 50% yet. The percentages range, you know, from about 15 up to 30, 35%, depending on the project. We've also had a few veterans contact us, some people coming out of the military who've asked if we have any special provisions or any programs for serving veterans. So that was something we thought could be interesting and helpful to add to the program. The, as you mentioned, the committee and the Board had asked for business plans from several of the applicants, so we figured we should add that as part of the application process, just be upfront about that, that they need to come up with a business plan. And then finally, as you mentioned, what's probably the most significant change is reducing the amount of time eligibility from three years to two years, which we hope can also attract some more projects to some of the centers throughout the communities. So, we did present this to the EDC at their October meeting, and as you mentioned, they recommended in favor of making these changes to the BETA program, and we hope to bring you more good applications in the coming months.
Do you think by lowering it down to two years, are we going to see, are you expecting like an influx of applications? Because we had a lot of new businesses come to Bartlett in that timeframe?
I don't think I would characterize it so much as an influx, so as much as that we want to encourage further investment in some of these properties if possible, and not tell somebody they have to wait for a year, a year and a half, or something like that. That's the only, the main reasoning behind that is to try to keep some of the momentum going from some of the earlier success of the program.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, are there, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm assuming this is something that needs to go through and be voted on in the next meeting, right?
Yes, we will move it on to board.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe Chairman Gansey has one more item.
Yes. So I wanted to bring up communication around COVID and what we're doing for residents. I know we've, last time we had the resolution talking about our restaurant owners, but I would just like to do a little bit of, have a discussion, what kind of communication that we're giving out to all of the residents of Bartlett, how we're helping keep them safe, and what's going on out there. You know, I think, I want to say that Village staff has done an awesome job posting on the Facebook page is where I mainly see it. I'm sure they're posting on Twitter as well, but I'm a Facebook, more of a Facebook user. And I know when I reached out in a little over, little over a month, there was 50 different posts that were going out talking about wearing a mask, washing your hands, anything from the testing sites to getting a flu shot even, just at general health. And we know people don't like too many restrictions, but we also know that people want public safety. So I guess I wanted to have a discussion and talk a little bit about if, what other ideas that we might have to help with that messaging. And I was kind of pulling a few ideas myself. I could start with, start with those really quick. One of the things that I saw some other villages doing is having a newsletter that people sign up for that goes to residents. So I know we have the great ones that are going to businesses right now, and I think that's super important, just seeing if there's another way. Like, we know communication takes more than one touch point for people, you know, so maybe they don't see it on Facebook and they're missing some of that great information that we have on our site that is in that Facebook post, but it's not coming through their feed. So trying to think, is there something, other way we can get that information out so more of our residents see it that we're, and that we're helping, that they know that we are looking at like their, their health and safety as well?
We have the, we have the eBlast newsletters that residents can sign up for, and we can certainly push out that info on how to, how to sign up for that and target it toward health and safety.
Okay, great. Because I, I think one thing that we're seeing, and anyone can feel free to disagree, but we're, we keep saying about wearing the mask. And every time I try to come and think like, how can we help people stay safe? It really comes down to like making sure that people are always wearing that mask when they're leaving and going, going in any place and distancing. And even myself, I had questions, I was talking to a nurse who's struggling right now. She's a local resident here, and she's just, she's struggling because her job has gotten really difficult at the hospital. She has so many patients. She's seen people pass away from this, and she was just saying, like, you know, a lot of us don't see that side. And it really opened my eyes, having some empathy for her when I'm doing most of my work remotely in my house, staying safe, and she's going right into the thick of it, you know. And she was just saying, you know, please wear, wear your mask wherever you go. When you come home, change your clothes. So she was just giving some different tips. And I see a lot of those tips on our, on our own Village website that are pulling from IDPH and other places. And I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to get all those messages out, even like how to wear your mask, what, you know, what type of mask. I'm constantly, oh, sorry.
I think we had a lot of that early on, too, the how to wear your mask. I'm going to regurgitate some of that stuff that we did put out there, because the CDC had some pretty good information on about how not to and how to effectively wear a mask. I'm not sure, I totally understand your interest in pushing more information out. I don't know if you can, there, sometimes there can be an information overload. But at this stage in this pandemic, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what else people need to know. I've been out multiple different places, and I have never seen anyone not wearing a mask in a grocery store, in a restaurant, everywhere that I've been, I've never seen anybody not wearing a mask. So I, I understand your objective, but I'm not sure what else we can do. But we can certainly, you know, try to refine the edges of our, of our message.
Thank you. I was going to ask the same thing. Where are you seeing people not wearing masks? Just on that curiosity question. I haven't seen anybody not wearing masks either.
Sure. So I was in, in some of the local stores, and there's like people walking in, and you could, you could tell that the employees are either not sure they could say something to those people.
The only issue that you have with that is, you know, there's so much information out there right now. And, and the thing is, is that if they haven't gotten the message now, what else you could do? They have just made up their mind. They want to be independent and regardless, and trustee, tell me, I'm telling you the truth, I've gotten in discussion arguments in Jewel early on, and also in other of these shops that we have here in the village, because people don't have masks on. They have a sign on the door, entries, a mask is required on entry, and they're standing there in the checkout line, and they're not wearing a mask. So I get into an art, a discussion which turned into an argument, and the response was, I mean, I'm, they're, they're in their twenties, okay? And the response I got, it's an old man's disease, you're going to get it, and I'm, I'm, I don't have to worry about it. So with that, my wife pulls me away, and it's just like, you know what, they've made up their mind. They're not, you're not going to change their mind. They're convinced that they're immune, or whatever the case may be, or you're infringing on their civil rights not to wear a mask. So I've given up. I don't even, if I see someone that's not wearing a mask, or wearing a mask improperly, you know, I just turn and walk away.
I saw, I picked up a pizza this weekend, and two of the people baking pizzas in the back in Bartlett weren't wearing their masks. I mean, and I've seen that before. So it's just, I agree, you know, people are going to decide to do it, or they're not going to do it.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what else we can do.
Well, one other suggestion I would have, if it's something feasible, I know staff is super busy, but one thing I could envision, we see a lot of these kind of cartoons that are, they're posted, you know, they're illustrations that are posted. Is there a way we can humanize it more? Like, interview that nurse, you know, get someone, you know, get like some of our faces of our residents, like, these are people you actually live with, and to kind of show a more human side to it than an illustration side. Because I'm a big believer, I know there's been a lot of information. I think this is one time where you almost can't have enough information, because there's so much that's always changing. But I think humanizing it more to make it realize, like, these are your fellow Bartletters. How are we?
My daughter is a nurse, cardiac nurse over at Delaware Hospital, and Kevin's daughter's also a nurse. And she puts a picture of herself on Facebook with the mask on and how to properly wear it and whatnot. So, are things happening like that?
Yeah, I think, I think that might not be a bad idea to, the thing that I think would be important is to, especially at this stage in the game, is to emphasize the numbers that I kind of shared with you guys. And the biggest fear that we would have is shortage of hospital beds and ICU beds. So I think that's a great idea, trustee Gansey. I think that if we reached, reached out to some of those first responders that are in our area and, and posted some actual interviews with details of what they're seeing sooner rather than later, I think that would be a great message.
Great. Thank you.
Is there a way, is there a way for us to pass a resolution, basically outlining some of the safety measures that Stephanie, our Gansey brought up? And I think that would go a long way. I know we passed a resolution for the restaurants, but let's pass one for our frontline workers who are out there putting their lives at risk. Not just hospital workers, but our employees at the Village of Bartlett, let's recognize them. I mean, they come to work every day, they risk getting the infection. And, and I, as a resident, as a trustee, I'm so thankful that our, our employees, our frontline Village of Bartlett employees are showing up to work and doing the job. I think it'd be, I mean, if I was an employee, I mean, I think it would be really important to pass this resolution and craft some language in there for that.
Yeah, we can, Paula, we can work on something like that. Good, good idea.
And I'll work with our communications staff on humanizing, putting a face to the message and bringing it a little more home for people. We can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
I just also want to say, I've seen our village employees out there, and they have been wearing their masks. I just saw on my way home from work today, I saw community service officers, I mean, they were wearing their masks. And it's, it's good to see, you know, our employees following proper protocol and procedures to keep everybody safe. So I just want to thank our employees.
Pass that on.
All right. Is that it? Chairman Gansey?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Final item on our agenda this evening for the Committee of the Hall meeting is Finance and Golf. Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we have, we're very blessed this evening. We had the audit of presentation, and now we get to go into the proposed capital budget. So, Todd, are you available?
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Danny. Yes, we are, we are blessed tonight. You're right.
And I know that I'm going to ask you to do this in 25 words or less, but that's, that's not going to happen. So go for it, Todd. Appreciate it. Go for it.
All right, thank you. I'm going to be tag teaming with Dan Dinges, our Public Works Director tonight. He's going to be helping me out. I'm going to give the short overview, and then we'll talk about the one-year capital budget, and then he's going to go over the new projects that are added to this year, and then update on some of the major projects that, that are continuing. So this is a five-year plan. It's our, it's to help our long-range planning needs. This is the beginning of our budget process for our next fiscal year, starting May 1, 2021. So we're a little ways out, but this helps to get the next budget going. It also gives Public Works the opportunity to bid out these construction projects early, get some, keeps the cost down and gets them started appropriately. So, on the overview, you see that this five-year program, this includes the 2021 year through the 2024, 25 year totals, almost $109 million. That's an 11% increase. So, as you can see in the chart below there, over prior years, the total costs go, can go up and down depending on the projects. As you see back in 2018, 19, that was the big water project. The current year we're in, the 2020, 21 estimate, just about $12 million. And then the year we're going to be focused on now is the 21, 22 year. That will be $34,234,34,773. So on the next page then, Dan's gonna flip me to the next, thank you, the, down in the lower left-hand corner, where it talks about the 21, 22 highlights. We are focusing on the, on this year, because this is the year that when we bring the resolution next, for the next meeting for approval, it will be to approve the $34,000,000, $34,234,000 that will roll into our operating budget. Also on this page shows the new projects. Dan's going to be going into those in more detail later on. Those are the three new projects that are presented or going to be in this budget. So next, I'm going to talk about, again, more detail of the $34 million. So Dan is gonna move us to page, table, page number 10. Yeah, thank you. So this is the 21, 22. It lists all of the projects in detail that will be in, included in the next year, and it lists the source of funds that will pay for each of the projects. So in the far lower right corner, to all totals up to $34 million that we're talking about. So, and there's more detail behind in each section. We have a section for the water, and then the sewer, streets, economic development, the golf section, and then other projects. You see on the top, our water projects, starting off with our water main replacement program and water tower painting, infrastructure improvements, that is the pump station at Sterns Road. So total coming out of the water fund would be just over, just under $3 million, $2,963,000. There is, the next section then is the sewer fund projects, the phosphorus removal programs, the sanitary system rehabilitation is at $1 million again this year. Then it's the Devon excess flow, the force main, $3,750,000. That comes out of the bonds that were issued. Lift station upgrades, and then the bittersweet wastewater treatment program that will be funded from IEPA loans. That's, that's the big one for this year, $16,750,000. Then we get into the streets, department, our MFT maintenance program, just over $2.8 million from MFT funds, our bike path improvements, crosswalk improvements, that's expected to be funded out of grants, and then our Oak Street parking, parking out of the municipal building fund. Next is our economic development section. That's our Brewster Creek Business Park, Bluff City. Those are both funded out of developer notes, and then they'll be repaid with TIF money, TIF increment as it comes in. Irrigation system for the golf. This year, we're just looking at the engineering phase, so that would just be $50,000. You'll see back in the detail, we actually pushed off the actual construction part an extra year, but we feel like we need to get this engineering phase in to see what, what kind of issues we have going forward. And then in the other section at the end, there's the Devon Avenue West Bartlett drainage, bike path, stormwater improvements, and then the Schick Bridge engineering study. So, that's a quick overview of the program for the coming year. I'm going to let Dan take over. Now, I did want to mention one thing that we are not planning on raising water sewer rates for this next year, the 21, 22 year. We're going to try to keep them steady where they're at. We should be good with the fund balances for one more year without raising rates. We will be talking about sewer rates, though, in the next month or two in regard, because we need to approve rates before the IEPA will approve the loan for the wastewater treatment plant. So we would be looking at rates increasing for that in the 22, 23 year and the 23, 24 year. So we'll look at that more in detail when that comes around, but we just want to give you a heads up in that regard. So, I'll turn it over to Dan, so, and he can go through the more detail on some of these projects.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Jump over to water. We're going to start with water. As Todd mentioned, we've got our normal program, water, water main replacement, water tower painting, this is the Sterns Road reservoir, Sterns Road pump station. The new projects that we're proposing are lead service replacement. Let me get to that. Lead service replacement program. What this is, is the IEPA currently has what they're calling a loan program, but it's, it's actually a loan forgiveness program to replace lead services. So we are in the process of applying for a loan through the EPA to replace all of our lead services, and we estimate about 250, to replace those, and we would not have to pay that loan back. So it's a two-point rough, our estimate is about 2.5 million to get those changed out. And if we are awarded that loan, we'd be able to get those services changed out, and I'd have to repay that loan, which would be really good news for us and our lead issues that we were dealing with this past year. So we're, we're hoping to get that in for July of next year, and then it'll be one of those things. If we don't make the cut that time, we'll just keep on the list until hopefully funding is still there, and we get our loan amount and can get those lead services changed out.
Real quick, Dan, just for clarification, there is no village-owned water mains that have lead services, correct?
That is correct. This would only be private services from our main to the house.
Correct. Okay. I just want to clarify that.
Yep. The next project, new project, is now that we're on DuPage Water, we can start to look at removing some of the infrastructure that we had in place for prior to, when we had wells and that. So this map here shows well eight, which is out by the Schick Tower, well, five and seven, which is by the Kent Circle Tower. Then we've got the Main Street Wells by Village Hall and Oneida Tower out in future years. What we're proposing for next year is abandoning, properly abandoning wells five and seven, and wells eight. And then while we're at well eight, because it's at the same location, we'd be working with Hanover Park to do an interconnect with them, so that as we replace or abandon these wells, we still need to have a backup just in case we can't get DuPage Water. And we're doing that with interconnects. We have one with Streamwood. We did a year ago, one or two years ago. So I'd like to get this connection with Hanover Park, another point of connection or an emergency, emergency-type situation. The other project that we need to talk about is, it's out several years, but Oneida Water Tower. I think I've talked about this in previous capital budgets. But if you remember, several years ago, we actually put that out to bid to paint it. And, I mean, it's in need of paint. It's in badly need of paint. I've actually been getting calls from residents asking when it's going to get painted. But the cost to paint that tower was in back, and this is back probably four years ago, was about $700,000 to paint that tower. One of the things when we were going through our study, Lake Michigan water, Oneida Tower is, I mean, we use it. It's about a half a million gallons worth of storage. But the issue with it is it's lower than South Wind and Schick Towers. So it kind of limits us on our ability to utilize some of those towers. So long-term, what we are looking at is the potential of actually removing that tower. And we had in the plans originally to build a new tower, and we would just take that half a million gallons that we would lose from Oneida Tower being removed, put it into that new tower. So I kind of want to get your feelings on that. Are you okay with that water tower downtown being removed? Could free up space for future parking, a parking deck, you know, who knows? But it would become available land at that point. One issue that we would have to deal with is, we do have, there's two cell tower providers on there currently. We'd have to work out a new location for them on that.
Trustee Hopkins' barn. No, I'm all for that. Do we get a pick, can I get a pick over there tomorrow, and I can, we can knock that down and put up a parking garage?
Yeah, that would work. You guys are good with that. That's kind of the plan. I do have it out a few years, because we don't need that storage right now. The downside is that our is in need of, you know, doesn't look the greatest. So it's something that we got.
I think the sooner we get rid of it, the better. I don't know how the other board members feel. I think, I think trustee Hopkins has a tractor, too. We could probably just pull it over.
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to spend any money on that right now if we're going to demolish it. You know, it's, it's.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought. Because looking at it, if, let's say the painting is about $750,000, the painting. Yeah, that's kind of my thought, cause the, looking at it, um, if, let's say the painting is about seven hundred fifty thousand to paint it. The demo is about two fifty to remove it and to add a half a million that we would be losing is about a half a million, it's actually under a half a million. So net gain, we're, we're gonna have better flexibility in our water operations by putting it into this new tower that we build out. Um, and we get rid of that tower.
Dan, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
Okay, what are those, what are, what are water towers made of, is that steel?
It's steel, yep.
Yeah, there's.
And, and isn't there a ton of steel there that would be worth some money that, I'm sure scrappers would go crazy over something like that?
I don't know what they do with the lead though.
It'll have to get blasted, it'll get blasted and then they'll, they'll, uh, they'll be able to salvage it. But yeah, the plan would be to, to scrap that steel.
That's how you get the person that, that takes it down, right, that's part of the.
That's part of their.
Part of their arrangement.
I think, may I, I think for seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe the current board can go out there and paint it. We'll take the seven hundred grand.
Oh, no, no.
The only.
No, you're gonna have to blast it out of spare steel again.
Yeah, let's not do that, moving on.
So where were you gonna build the new tower?
We have, uh, two potential sites and ideal location would be replacing the Kent Circle Tower with a bigger tower. That's a small tower right now, um, and we'd like to actually potentially tear that one down as well and build a new tower there cause it's centrally located. Um, but we do have a site in the, uh, south of the fire station on West Bartlett, uh, working with the Brewster Creek Business Park, uh, we have some land kind of reserved for, for a future tower there as well. So those are the two locations that we've looked at, um, to be able to build a tower.
And do you have a timeframe to build the new tower?
We were showing that the tower would probably be built that same, that same year when, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
The, the only question I have, uh, Mr. Dinges is, I don't know much about, you know, pressurization of lines. Um, does this do anything to, um, houses or businesses nearby, uh, as far as pressurization?
It actually should improve, um, cause we'd be able to raise the water levels a little bit more um, to get them at the same level as the Schick and South Wind. And actually, we're also looking at, we have, uh, the high pressure side over by Villa Olivia, we're actually looking to open that up and move it closer to the downtown area, so to help boost the pressures in that area. So I think overall, when we get all that done, would actually improve the pressures in that area.
Thank you.
All right, uh, and the last proposed project is hydrant painting. We have over two hu, uh, over twenty-five hundred hydrants and it's something we need to maintain. So we, looking at putting a program together where we would start chipping away at, uh, getting these hydrants painted every year. Um, that's pretty much it, is just start maintaining, making sure that we have our, uh, hydrants in good working order and looking good throughout the town. Any other questions on the water budget? All right, I'm gonna move on to sewer. Um, the overview on the sewer, there are no new projects. I just wanted to provide an update on some of the ongoing larger projects. Um, we continue on this, uh, sanitary sewer system rehabilitation. That's where we're, uh, lining sewers, lining manholes, smoke testing, flow monitoring, um, televising and inspecting manholes in all the different areas, um, where we had, you know, in the older parts of town. Um, trying to eliminate that stormwater from getting into the sanitary sewer. Um, we, you know, goal there is to always have a section of town where we're doing rehab work and study work so that we can, can just continue improving on the system and renewing it. You know, we're, we're renewing the clay, uh, system that we currently have, we've lined a good portion of it at this point. Um, and we'll continue to do that. Um, Devon excess flow, um, I can jump over to that. Devon excess flow, that's our M W R D excess flow facility, that design is well underway. We've got, uh, the force main that's being brought down to the bittersweet treatment plant along with a new lift station that'll serve as the excess flow for the M W R D area along with that area south of Devon, uh, which is the DuPage area. We'll have a new lift station that'll support both of those areas, bring it down to the treatment plant, um, and get treated down there. Um, this one is being, uh, kind of coordinated with the bittersweet treatment plant improvements. Um, but we anticipate going out the bid probably spring, summer next year with construction starting next fall. Um, and then, of course, we've got the bittersweet treatment plant, um, that's the big one. We are in the middle of applying for the I E P A loan. Next month, I'll be bringing in ordinance and resolution in relation to that loan uh, and authorization for, uh, village administrators sign the documents. Right now, it's looking like those, the loan rate is at about one point three five percent, so it's, uh, good rate, uh, take advantage of that as much as possible. There is a chance that we could get that loan money in January, which is what the E P A calls their bypass year. Right now, we're on schedule for July of next year. But if projects get behind schedule and we're ready to go, which I anticipate we will, we've actually applied for a permit at this point. Um, if, if the money that was available in January, E P A said that they would look at, uh, funding our project in January. So we're trying to get everything set up for that. I think it's probably a slight chance that we get it, cause we're asking for thirty-seven million dollars. Um, but they've already told us that if we don't get it in January, we're in really good shape for July. If it's July, we're looking at going out the bid, uh, probably late spring, have it ready to go so we can award it right away after we would get that loan in July. It's similar to the, when we did it for the DuPage Water, uh, receiving station, we'd start construction in fall of next year. And it's probably about a two-year project to complete. Um, are there any questions on sewer?
The only question I have is, um, what kind of, um, as far as the sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, as far as the services that are servicing the houses, which I think we've talked quite a bit about it, um, you feel a lot of the excess flow is coming from residential service lines? Can we have a more robust program for fixing those issues?
Yes, uh, right now, we actually, this past year, we actually did, um, we kind of experimented with doing some service work. We, we, from the study that we did, uh, east of Oak, north of the tracks, we went through that, found the areas where we had, from the smoke testing, the services that were bad, we contacted all those residents. Unfortunately, we didn't get any of them interested in paying for it going all the way to their house. But what we ended up doing is going from the main to the right of way so that we could kind of take care of, of a big chunk, cause I have a feeling we're gonna have an issue getting residents to pay for going all the way to the house. And going, uh, after our discussions with Naperville, they went through that process as well and had that same problem where they weren't getting a lot of buy-in all the way to the house. So they ended up changing their program and, and they are currently lining on their own, uh, program from the main to the right of way. Uh, with the thought there is you're, you're eliminating a lot of those utility conflicts that could happen that are in the right of way, all the, uh, phone, cable, gas, and anybody that's directionally drilling that can go through the services, all that stuff, you're kind of getting through all that, getting it to the right of way. And then the issue, once, you know, from the right of way to the house is, uh, what type of trees do they have, root problems and that? But hopefully you're getting high enough out of the water table to avoid the, uh, groundwater, uh, getting into the sewer at that point. Um, but we have that program in place, we'll continue it. Um, we plan on, uh, one thing we learned from that is, uh, it's, it actually was a separate contractor that did the service lining versus our main line lining, so we're gonna actually bid them separately cause I think we'll get a better price, we won't have to pay a markup for the general contractor or the guy that did the main line stuff. I think we'll get a better price and hopefully that'll, will encourage some of the residents to join in as well.
Since we haven't really had too many residents bite at it, uh, could we sweeten the pot and make it eighty-five percent? Um, I don't think that would be too big of a budget impact, um, just to try to see if more residents actually take advantage of it because it is a great benefit if you don't have to treat excess flow.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the board, I mean, it's, we've got fifty thousand dollars in the budget. Um, you know, if we go with eighty-five percent, that's, you know, that less that we would do. But yeah, I, I mean, I think that would definitely help get some of these residents to, uh, jump at it. We have some, we have a list now, we've been reaching out to some of the others and we have a list of people that are interested when we go out the bid again. It all gets down to when we tell them, here's the amount, and then they say, ah, you know, and this year was understandable with, I mean, we were in the middle of COVID and all that. People, you know, weren't spending money and I get that, so we're, I don't know what this next year will be and whether we're gonna be done with COVID by next spring, but, um, I'm not sure what type of response we'll get, but yeah, we can definitely look at that.
How, about how much is it for a resident, is it a, like, is it that five thousand or?
Yeah, it's, it, it varies, it depends, it depends on what we call a short side and a long side. So the, the sanitary sewer typically is on one side of the road or the other. So you'll have, if it's on, let's say on the west side of the road, the houses on the west side have the short side and then you gotta cross the road to get to the east side, so those guys are the long side. So we kind of averaged it out and that's where this five thousand, uh, number came in. Um, but it's, I'm trying to remember what the cost per foot was, I, I wanna say it was around eighty-five dollars a foot, somewhere in there. Um, but like I said, I'm, we're hoping to get a lower price if we can go out, uh, separate bid, so.
Yeah, if no one objects, I'd like to just modify the permit and we can always review it. If it doesn't work out or if too many people apply or if not enough people apply, we can always look at it down the road.
I, I would just wanna know the number actually, but I'd be, I'd be, I'd be, I would be for that, uh, Trustee Hopkins. Um, just to get, just to get a little more traction and, and I think you're, you're right on spot, that mitigates some of the problems um, that we have over in that area, so. But I would wanna know, I'd wanna see the numbers the next time we talk about it.
I could put that together.
And then, uh, do, is it all, I'm assuming it's mainly a, a price factor for people, but did they bring up any other, like, just kind of questioning what it means for, like, what is it, how is it working?
Uh, we explain them what the, the, how the program works and how, uh, how it benefits them. Um, especially if they've had issues where they have to rod that sewer, their service regularly because of roots or anything like that. It'll, it'll save them from having to do that, so we haven't had many issues in regards to that, it's more of the dollars.
Okay.
You know, you know, if it's a couple thousand dollars, they just, you know, didn't wanna deal with that. If they're, if they're, if they're having to rod their sewer once a year or something, that's maybe a hundred, two hundred dollars. Multiply it by ten, now it starts to add up pretty quick, you know, so, but they would be done with it if they did the lining. They'd be done with it for a long time, so.
Okay.
Eighty-five percent would definitely help, it definitely helps the system overall if we can get it all the way to the house. There's no doubt about that, we know it's sealed off at that point.
Dan, let's take a look at it, huh?
Hey, okay.
Come on.
Um, all right, that's it on sewer, I'm gonna jump over to streets. Um, we've got our regular M F T maintenance program that we're doing. Um, bike path maintenance, parking lots, Todd kind of already covered a lot of that stuff. Um, the South Oak Avenue parking lot will be coordinated with more brewing because, um, we're anticipating them to start construction and we're gonna allow them to utilize that lot during construction for staging. So we gotta wait until they're done before we could build the parking lot, but the goal is to have it ready to go so that as soon as they're done, we can get that lot built so it can be utilized for the public. Are there any questions on street? Um, if there's nothing else, the only other thing I had was on, uh, I think Todd kind of covered most of it. But we had, um, another, the, I just wanted to report that the West Bartlett Devon Drainage Swale, we actually finally got approval from M W R D, so we can actually go out the bid. We'll probably go out the bid this winter and start construction as soon, as soon as the weather breaks next spring. So that's over by, uh, Village Church, uh, east of Devon along the path there, we're gonna improve the drainage and the bike path there. Uh, and then the other, uh, one there is the Schick Road Bridge over the West Branch DuPage. Based on our engineering study, it's, it's been recommended that we plan to replace that deck. Um, so we have that, you'll see that in twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, bridge deck replacement. So that's a big ticket number, the good news there is the Rebuild Illinois money that we are receiving can go towards that. So the bulk of that money will go probably towards that bridge.
That's the one on Mayflower?
It's the one on, it's on Schick, cross, uh, that crosses the, it's West Branch into DuPage.
Sorry.
That's all I have unless anyone else has questions.
Any other questions at all?
Thank, thank you, Dan.
Hi, gentlemen.
Uh, so, yeah, so if, uh, that, that's the review that, uh, we've gone over what the one-year program is. So if there aren't any questions in there, our next step would be to, to approve the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Um, do we need to firm up the details on a couple of those items that we talked about? So I'm assuming that this will come back to the board for approval and at that time, we'll be able to take a look at some of the things that we discussed.
I don't think, and, do, oh, oh, oh. Dan, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, um, the, the number that the mayor's looking for on the eighty-five percent, um, share uh, for lining, that would be based on the bid that we would get out in the spring.
Yeah, we could give, what I could do is provide a update email to the board. Um, just giving numbers based on what we'd had this past year, just to give you an idea what that would be. Uh, the, the budget really, unless you're proposing to increase to fifty thousand dollars that we have there, um, the budget doesn't really change, we have fifty thousand dollars.
Ah, yeah, yeah, you're, you're right, you're right, once it runs out, it's out, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, then we'll prepare that to go to the board for, um, approval.
All right, that's all we have, Chairman Danny.
That's it, Mr. President.
All right, I'll entertain him. I wish everybody, uh, safety, uh, reiterate the fact that I wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving and, um.
Thank you.
Yes, and, um, we'll try to hit them straight tomorrow when we're out at Bartlett Hills.
Well, that's Thursday.
Oh, Thursday.
Thursday, eleven forty-five, well, tell everybody eleven thirty.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Hopkins, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Suwansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned, stay safe everyone.